Mura mende muna papa, local government muni nina. Aungu aliku tumama muni nina kala waka musungiria pambet. Wama mautu darani roseru muni nina akoni basa. Iwa waka musungiria pambet. Saka sungirwa pambet ya say. Prokioa mende yokuma local government ina itwa office marketing. Pura iri anja the president in terms of the water here. So se se foren kare, siro mane janesan rafen. Asa ni gajitu dilvaimu ri po.
Mo sande nyuwa na baba. Di mi ma garamba ku dele ra majoke. Seno diwa na musiti, jona egas, sata egas.
Harare 1043, it is 1043 in as an independent city. It's much older, but it also was known as Salisbury. Now we're going to be looking at Zimbabwe at 43. And in particular, our focus is going to be on Harare at 43. The challenges, the forward-looking part of it, and where those who are running our city are taking it to. Now, most of us have said Harare has been ruralized. And it's now a mini Goguenembutzia township. Some have said that Harare can be greater and can be bigger. But joining me on this The Free Talk is the mayor, is worship Jacob Mafume to discuss the challenges of Harare and to tell us where we are taking this city to, back or forward. Now join me just after this break, your host as usual Dara, blessed Mchlanga, as we discuss the so what about Harare. Welcome back to this The Free Talk with me, your host Dara, blessed Mchlanga, and we are in townhouse this evening, discussing the so what about Harare. Now, thank you very much Mayor Jacob Mafume for agreeing to have us in this townhouse.
Thank you. It's always a pleasure to welcome you. I normally am at your offices. Today you are here at our offices. Well, like you say, Harare is 43. We congratulate the nation for attaining 43 years of independence. We also congratulate the citizens of Harare. Independence is an ideal that we share. It's an ideal that my president, advocate Nelson Chamisa, is very committed to, as well as the rest of the party. Just a few days ago, we were at the independence celebrations in Mount Darwin with the delegation from our party. We were celebrating with the nation, with all Zimbabweans, from all walks of life, the attaining of independence. We might differ on the quality and the direction of where we are going, but independence is something to celebrate and also to note the sacrifices of young men, women, old men and old women who sacrificed their all so that we could become mayors. As you know, it would have been difficult to be a mayor before 1980 if you were in the wrong color. And therefore, that is something worthy of celebrating. And as we move on to the various stages of where the nation has to be, we acknowledge and we stand on the shoulders of luminaries like Chitepo, Tongogara, Nikita Mangena, Josu Wankwamu Wengomo, and all those nationalists that paved the way for the independence struggle.
So, so Mayor, this was supposed to be the Sunshine City. Forty-three years down the line, people don't believe that this is the Sunshine City anymore. What has happened?
Well, there have been a lot of systemic issues that have happened to Harare. And we need to restore the former glory of Harare. Is the Sunshine City, is the city where every day is a good day. And we believe that with the right application and the right policy framework. For instance, as city of Harare, we used to provide our own energy. We had our own power station, which is still functioning, which was taken over by Zesa. And since it was taken over by Zesa, it produces zero megawatts and sometimes 12 megawatts per day. You will recall that the last dam for Harare was built in 1976 by government like Manyame. The last dam built by the city was in the 1950s, Lake Chivero. And these dams were built for 500,000 people. And the population has grown into the greater Harare to be 3 million. We used also to handle our own roads. And this was taken over by Zinara, which takes about 64 million US dollars per year and gives back to Harare 1.5 million US dollars. And that's why there are no roads. Simple things like procurement has to go to PRAS, a department that is in the president's office. So in other words, to buy water, to buy a tissue, we have to have a process that goes all the way to the president's office. And all these revenue heads that were taken away from the city council have contributed to putting pressure on the rates and the lack of infrastructural development. We used to have complex ways of financing the cities. That is municipal bonds and government guarantees. Now you have government guarantees to buy tractors and scotch carts, but no government guarantees for the infrastructure of the city. You cannot build a city using red payers money because that comes cash and can be unreliable. You use, you build a city using complex infrastructural development tools like municipal bonds, government guarantees, and the city of Harare has not received a government guarantee for the past 20 years.
But Mayor, someone sitting at home and hearing you complain about all these things would then ask themselves, why do we even elect councillors? Or why should we even have a mayor? Because you seem like you don't have a solution to these problems because all the issues, you are throwing them at someone's doorstep.
Well, highlighting the issues is not that we don't have a solution. We are working towards getting Zinara to bring back the money. They are going to hold a conference where all the mayors and town clerks are going to be invited so that we re-look at the formula that they are using to disperse the money. It should be simple, vehicle road user licenses. The world over are used to repair the roads for the road authority where your car is registered. And that is what we are going to push with Zinara. When I raised this issue, the Zinara chairperson and this whole executive came to visit us. When I raised the issue about Zesa, it is not because I'm complaining. It's for us to correct the issue. Zesa took a whole power station without paying for it. They took 200 properties from Harare, including the offices opposite Jemison that they are using. They don't pay rent. They never paid compensation. So when we do that, we are restoring a civilized society so that we address those situations. Once we get back those revenue head, we've got a quarry as Harare where we make road making materials. We've got an asphalt plant where we can make tar. We will retool those plants. Once we retool those plants, we'll then be able to do the roads like we used to do before. And also the water, we need to build a dam for Harare. We need to get a canal from Muche Karanawa, that is from the eastern islands, from Marondira, Rosape. A Muche Karana canal, which is 70 kilometers right up to Harare. Once we do that, we've got clean water coming from the dam. Right now, water is just flowing into the Indian Ocean without being used, yet it is dammed here in Zimbabwe. So we are going to come up with these solutions. We are also going to deal with the issues of financing the city. We need to be able to highlight some of the issues that happen. We have told kids, you pay to go into a highway. You pay to get out of the highway, but you don't give back the money to the city. The city pays to go, a motorist pays to go into the highway. He also ironically pays to come out of the highway into Harare. And that money doesn't come to the city of Harare. So it is these anomalies that we need to rectify so that people can get quality services. We are going to restore the city back to where it was. We are re-looking at the city stadium. That is, we're going to very soon finish the Ruffaro Stadium. We are going to increase the clinics. The city is in charge of giving births to about 2,000 babies every month. We are going to increase the number of births. Kater House, we are going to turn it into a maternity house. We are going to have theatres. We already have a theatre at Mapopu Poly Clinic. We are going to have a theatre at the Topoman Clinic extended to Kater House, where we are going to be doing cesarean options. So we are going to have the capacity before August to deliver 3,000 babies per month as the city of Harare. We are also looking at if we'd get the formula of the roads correctly to do the roads network, repair it and restore it to where it was. We are also looking at our waterworks. What we have done right now, we have repaired the pumps at Warren Hills. All the 14 pumps are now new. We are going to also repair the pumps at Moton Jeffries. We've got two pumps that have to be repaired for 1.5 million. We have introduced new technology of cleaning water at Moton Jeffries using what we call chlorine dioxide generators that have been put in place at the cost of 3 million US. There are going to be test run starting this week, where we are going to have better smelling water, cleaner water and more water, and use less chemicals and use less cost for the water. So these are the things that we are doing for the city of Harare ourselves. We are going to clean up our ERP, our internet systems, and then we are going to be able to give accurate bills and bills on time.
Yeah, let's talk about the issue around accurate bills. This is not the biggest archilus hill that you have been bleeding money because of incompetence within your administration. You have failed to bill people correctly and therefore recover revenue for the city. This is why you're in this mess.
Yes, part of it is that so. We have recently, I had a meeting with PRAS. We have stopped a contract which was going to cost, a computer system contract which was going to cost the residents 57 million US, five years. This contract, I believe, was a result of corruption and was going to bleed the residents. We have dealt with the staff that were doing it. We are going to cooperate with PRAS and our own internal procurement mechanisms to bring back an ERP system that will allow us to have audits, that will allow us to have modules that will capture and modules that are auditable. So we have already rectified that. And in the next two to three weeks, we should be having an enterprise resource system for the city that should be able to allow us to communicate with residents where they are.
But why did it take you this long? Because your billing system has been in shambles for years.
Yes, it took us long, I must admit, because of reasons of corruption. Corruption among the vendors, corruption among some of our staff, and so forth. And they were determined to get an expensive ERP. Remember, we had an ERP in 2019 which allowed us to do an audit. Each ERP was costing us 75,000 US dollars. We went from that ERP which was functioning to one called Sage which was costing us 350,000 US dollars and was not functioning. And just recently, the staff was trying to convince us to get an ERP system that would have cost 57 million US dollars for an accounting software. And we stopped it. And PRAS thankfully agreed with us to stop it. Now we are going to work very fast with the chairperson of the finance committee to get a system in before or by the next month.
Would you care to name these people who are behind this attempt to fleece or bleed the local authority?
Well, it was the IT manager, primarily in my view, responsible. We had an argument with the IT manager. He went to the press, if you look at the herald of two weeks ago, saying that it is the councillors who are not knowledgeable that this system of 57 million US dollars is actually cheap. I don't believe that. I don't believe that. Blawayo, Zinwa are using a system that we used to use. And they are able to do their books and they are able to do their audits at a fraction of 57 million US dollars. We can't afford that kind of software. And they were persisting as people to come up. And the bravery was such that the IT manager went to the press to defend that procurement. So from his own mouth, he nailed himself to the cross of wanting such an extravagant 57 million US ERP system. We need ERP system and modules that are far much cheaper, that will save the residents. And he went to get a company called Munisoft or something from South Africa. And we are going to engage that company as a city to say, this is not on. We can't have a situation where the Harare residents are fleeced again by these contracts.
You talk about the power plant, you talk about the roads, but residents are really worried. You're failing to just do simple things like collect refuse. You will find molds of refuse. Resident on the road just outside OK 5, just outside Chatta Road, where there used to be a public toilet there. I mean, does that really, really need us to talk about PRAS, to talk about all these things when you are failing to do the simple things?
What we are going to do around waste collection. One of the biggest problems has been the equipment and the workshop. The equipment that we have been buying, frequent breakdowns, and that it is limited and few. We need for Harare on a single day, we need 46 trucks, that is compacters. We need about 20 Tipa trucks. And we need about five front-end loaders per day to be able to deal with one, the backlog of the dumps. We have about 600 dumps, illegal dumps in Harare, and those that need to be cleared. We have improved somewhat with the town collections at Market Square, Chinoy, and so forth. And part of the problem is that because of the Pomona issue, the private hectares that used to dump at Pomona can no longer dump at Pomona because they are being charged 40 dollars per ton. So they are now coming to dump into town and other big dumper. So the city is having to collect from these illegal dumpings. So we are going to have an accelerated program to deal one with our workshops, that the equipment that is in the workshops, we are going to buy the equipment and then move that equipment. Part of the things why I'm talking of these other things is because Zesa ties down a lot of revenue of the city. We owe Zesa around 3 to 8 billion US dollars. And there is a payment plan every month. And that is money that we could have used to refuse collection. There was wisdom in us having our own power station. And what we are going to do as a solution, blessed, is that we are going to go into solar plants. We are offering land to people who have capacity, 500 hectares to do 100 megawatts stations or even more if they have capacity. I am made to understand that one hectare produces 1 megawatt. We've got around 1,000 hectares that we could partner with people who are able to do.
But you are resisting a power plant that is supposed to come up from your Pomona dump site. You are resisting it.
No.
I saw a tweet recently which you made saying that you're not part of the Pomona delay, you're not paying anything.
Yeah, no, that one does not make sense. A 100 megawatt power plant costs about 50 to 60 million US dollars. That one is going to take us, your own paper reported, that it's going to cost the city 1 billion US dollars to produce 22 megawatts. That is uneconomical and does not make sense. The city uses more megawatts per day than those. And in any event, we are paying rentals. It's the first of its kind where a landlord has to pay rentals to their own property. We are supposed to be paying rentals to our own property. And at the end of the day, we are supposed to buy the little electricity that comes out of that plant if it ever comes out of it. There are simpler solutions. We can do smaller power stations like what other companies are doing. 6 megawatts, we've got the space, 8 megawatts for certain activities. We divide the city into components. We produce smaller plants that are close to the national grid and they feed into the national grid. And these smaller plants cost even less. It costs 6 million and so forth. You've got your 10 megawatts. If you want the big ones, the ones I'm talking about, you need 60 million, 50 million, and you are done. So that is where we are going as a city. We are going to be able to produce our own capacity by the end of this year. We should be able to produce 100 megawatts. And we should be able to, as a city, be self-sufficient on energy. Once we do that, we are then able to buy equipment to deal with refuse collection, planning, and other things that we have to do as a city.
But Mayor, some would argue that there's just a culture of laziness in your local authority. People are paid to sleep. You'd find that people dig a hole in the middle of the road. They just don't fill it back. They leave it like that and go. They take molds of gravel and it's just put by the side of the road. And people forget it exists.
Yes, that's what, that's the behavior we are going to have to deal with. And that's a culture that has developed over years.
How are you dealing with it?
No, what we have done is we are developing a new culture. We are putting a results-based management system within the city. We are no longer giving contracts for life. You'll find that people have got 40 years, 50 years doing the same job, no appraisal. They just wake up, come to work, and no one is evaluating what they do. We are no longer going to give people contracts for life. You know, we as councillors get a contract for five years. And we are supposed to produce changes. That's what we are going to do with our senior management and many of these other contracts. They have to be renewable based on results and the activities that are being produced at the particular place. It is no longer an automatic, it will no longer be an automatic renewal without an assessment. People are now used to results-based management systems. Uses of where you have to give value to the residents, reduce financial leakages. It's like the Ruffaro Marketing saga. It used to be one of the biggest liquor retail companies in the city. And it was allowed to rot. It is over 136 bars and over 20 properties that were not being milked. We changed the board recently, fired the chief executive called Mutu Adirwa, who was taking all the money from the resident. And guess what? Within the month, we were getting 50,000 US back to the city council as renters. We own the biggest brewery in Harare, which is being used by Delta Corporation. And we are not getting revenue as a city from that brewery, which the residents built. We are now going to get revenue from the brewery.
What have you done after knowing that you were losing all this money and someone was pocketing money on behalf of Harare? Are you going to recover it?
Yes, we are going to recover it. We fired the person, the people are doing audits. They will pursue that person and look for the assets that he has to refund any illicit money that was taken. Because it was over 20 years, no money coming to the city of Harare from Ruffaro Marketing, yet we had bars all over. People were now subleasing them and making millions, thousands and thousands of dollars for their own personal pockets. But that, we've put a stop to it. And we are moving entity by entity, department by department, closing the leakages. And once we close the leakages, this city will have the revenues that it will be able to provide services to the residents.
Mayor, recently there was a storm where your city council police officers were wreaking havoc on the streets, becoming a law unto themselves, towing vehicles and at times wheeling drivers so that they could just get them and tow their vehicles. Let's talk about that. Are you a heartless city father?
No, I love the people. That's why we are stopping the stealing of the people's money and we put a stop to some errant behavior. Part of it is corrupt behaviors by the municipal police who adopt old habits and bad habits. And we are nipping them, these bad habits, or pruning them because they are no longer budding, but they are existing bad habits. So maybe pruning is the word. We are pruning such corrupt behaviors and heartless behaviors through a variety of things. The ones that cannot be redeemed, we are relieving them of their duties. The ones that can be redeemed, we are going to do a continuous training about customer care and the handling of citizens. And secondly, we have relaxed the applications of the particular laws. As you know, these are laws that we find in existence. So we are going to a process of changing the laws, reducing the fines from 57 dollars to 20 dollars in due course. And also the application of other charges like towing charges and storage charges, we've suspended them for a period while at least we are sorting out the budgetary issues. As you know, our budget is approved by the minister. The minister approves the bylaws, the minister approves the budget. And these are fines that we approved by the ministry. And we have to go back to the ministry for their reduction. And there is a process to do that. So we will send these fines and these laws for them to be brought down. What we will need to do, of course, is to balance the need to have a city. You know, shop owners were complaining that people were packing in front of their stores and selling the very same goods that are being sold in the shop for the cost of just packing there. Some were complaining that customers are no longer fast-moving. You've got a department store that requires people to move from the parking spaces fast. And if someone robs the parking space for a long period of time, then they will not think. Then we need to, in the long run, blessed, we need to improve our public transport so that not everyone needs to have a car in the city center. Now the main form of transport is the city center. You are a well-traveled journalist. You know that once you leave Zimbabwe and you go into Europe or the states where you were, I heard Charamba complaining about you being in the States. You don't need public transport, you don't need private transport. You can hop into a train, you can hop into a bus, you can hop into, to get into the city center, do what you need to do, get back and go back where you're coming from. So the solution to the congestion and traffic problems of Harare is public transport. And to that end, we are going to increase the number of car parks. We are going to go back into buying commuter omnibuses and to introduce light rail as a city. And then that will relieve and that will reduce the need for people to do a school run using a car, to get into town using a car, so that we decongest the city. Everyone wants to come to Harare. Harare is the city of opportunity. It's the city where sporting dreams, church dreams, business dreams, reporters' dreams, politicians' dreams are made of. So everyone wants to come to the city that we run. And we are going to accommodate all of them. And we are going to make sure we create a platform where everyone can realize their dream.
Harare has become a stage for political contestation. In fact, from the time of election up to now, central government has been, if you look by the tweets from the secretary, for the permanent secretary for information, Joe Charamba's tweets, you'd see that there is a contestation of power. Central government looking at local government, looking at Harare city as failures and advertising as such. Let's talk about that.
Oh, there's a blame. There's a blame Harare going on. Blame Jacob Mafume as the mayor going on by, surprisingly, by the government. I don't run the economy. The government is running the economy. I'm not the one who has devalued the RTGS. Minister Mutuli runs the economy. I'm not the one who is getting vehicle license fees from residents. Zinara is getting the money. I'm not the one who is getting money for health. I'm not the one who is getting money for electricity. The government is the one that is supposed to do those things. Some days we can't pump water because there are power cuts. We can't do the roads because the money is not coming from Zinara. We can't pay our foreign suppliers because we have to queue for foreign currency at the Reserve Bank. The government must realize that it is the one that is running the country and that we are a local government, we are the micro, they are the macro. And that we are a local government, we are the micro, they are the macro. And that the indicators that they pointed are the result of failure at central government level. But however, eh, August is very close by. Very soon, eh, advocate Nelson Chamisa will be in the seat and we will show them the miracles that we can do. We are producing miracles as it is running within the city.
People have argued, you've, you've failed to run Harare City Council, you failed to run towns. How can you run a country?
The fact that the towns still exist is because we are here. Everything that Zanu PF has touched has collapsed. CSE collapsed, that's local government. Railways collapsed, that's local government. Schools collapsed, that's local government. Universities collapsed, that's local government. Every area of government, rural growth points, they have not moved from since the war and they are controlled by government. The fact that the cities exist as they still do is because of us. Otherwise, there will be no cities to talk about. They would have been looted dry. They would have been brought to the ground. We are still able to pay salaries. Remember, at one point, they even took water and put it under Zinua. And there were catastrophic consequences until they retained it back to Harare. And we have managed to keep, eh, the cities going, keep the city despite the dramatic failure at central government by the various ministers, the minister of energy, minister of water, minister. They, even the minister, they are building dams elsewhere, not even in Harare. They build a dam, eh, somewhere and they start arguing that they will be exporting the water to South Africa. The dams are inhabited by crocodiles and in game parks, yet where their populations, dams are not being built. Eh, hospitals are not being built, eh, and so forth. But what we are doing is we have mitigated, eh, the effects of the disastrous policies. And what, going forward, we are now going to engage as cities. We are going to go back into energy. I know Blawe already is licensing someone to do a solar power station. We as Harare, very soon are going to be licensing people to do power stations. So as cities, we are going to go back to providing the things that our citizens need, eh, on our own. And then we'll make sure that we create self-contained, eh, organizations that are able to, to, to sustain a modern life in a modern world.
Some have argued that local authorities have failed because councillors are uneducated, they are corrupt and incompetent. And recently, government said it was working on a law that will ensure that councillors who do not have at least four, five L O levels would not be allowed into townhouse.
How many doctors are in the cabinet? Where is the economy? How many doctors have run the reserve bank? Where is the economy? How many doctors have run the minister of finance? Where is the economy? These cities were not built by degrees. People who used to work in these cities used to have ZJC, yet they build dams. They used to be artisans, yet they build power stations. They used to be a degree. This fascination with a degree, whatever, even a degree in witchcraft by Zimbabweans will be the, the destruction of our society. As how many educated people are there in countries like Botswana, yet they are being run very well? We have more educated people, more universities than Botswana and Namibia, and those countries collapsed. There is a fascination about reading what someone has written in Zimbabwe that is of misplaced priorities. What we need is a moral upright leadership, leadership that is clear on issues of corruption. That knows that I have to give a contract to this engineer to do this, that we need to be able. And in any event, it is ironic that someone will try to create barriers of entry on the eve of independence. Thousands of young men and women fought to reduce barriers to entry. Once you put barriers like education qualification, where will you stop? Very soon you will be discriminating, eh, among people. Some of our leaders, eh, 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 one of, who built one of the biggest opposition movement, eh, in this country, was, eh, Richard Morgan Tengray. He did not have a doctorate. Many doctors had tried to build opposition parties and they failed to build opposition, eh, eh, political parties. Eh, what we need is that as a society, we need just to know what we need. If we need a good road here, we need a good road here. Sewage does not smell differently to an educated person than to an uneducated person. So we need to remove that. And what we need to do as a solution, once we put a person in place, we do continuous training. We do upskilling so that people can understand the finances, they can understand public health, they can understand water. And continuous training in other countries like South Africa, you, you go through mandatory training, which is continuous. And you must remember, eh, blessed, the origins of many of our professions, and that's why they are called professions, was not the paper you were holding. You would practice as a journalist to become a good journalist. You would practice as a lawyer to become a good lawyer. You would practice as an accountant to become a good accountant. You would practice as an engineer to become a good engineer. In other words, you left your Form Four, you left your Form Six and were put into a lose room, into a law firm. Qualifications came recently to just put order to things, but we cannot make those barriers to entry. And it's our duty to educate our people. We cannot require people to have that which we are not giving them. We have expensive tertiary education. We have expensive secondary education. Unlike other societies like Cuba, where you can throw a stone and you'll hit a doctor, they've demystified having tertiary qualifications. And until we reach that stage, we must accept that our society is where it is currently. No one will live in Zumba Maramba Fungwe with a doctorate waiting to be a councillor of some, eh, eh, rural district, eh, sitting on a professorship. The people there will have to become councillors and they will have to develop their societies. And if we see deficiencies, we should give them courses to be able to make them make the right decisions at the right time.
I, I just wanted to, to, to hear your mind on this, that, that. What is more important, a councillor or a president? Because I find that you can be a president without any barrier, eh, in terms of education, but there's an attempt to.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. We have a country that manages upside down. I would assume that the president oversees a lot of things, eh, the whole budget of the economy. And an MP are the ones that are making these laws that are lending us into trouble. They are the ones passing the budgets. What are the educational requirements? Where are they starting from? At the lowest tier of government, where there is minimum impact. Yet at the highest, what is the qualification for a minister? What is the qualification to go into boards of parasiters? Do an audit of the qualifications of the people that are being put to manage Zesa, being put to manage N R Z. What are their qualifications? So, we cannot, eh, eh, be hypocritical as a society. But what I know for sure is that these buildings, this city, were built by people with far much less education. Right now, I have degreed people in almost every department, doctorates and masters. They can walk out of here and lecture everywhere, but the quality of service is not what we require. So, everyone knows they need water, they need a good road, they need electricity. All we need to do is to pay and employ the right people for those jobs.
Mayor, we are going into elections, um, just, just this August. And do you think that you have done enough to justify the people of Harare saying, Jacob Mafume, can you have another bite?
Well, it's up to the people. We have fought with the people at all times. Eh, we fought with the people around Pomona issues. We fought with the people around Zinara issues. We fought with the people around water issues. We fought with the people around the fifty-seven ERP million US dollar contract. We have heard the people when they complained about, eh, city parking and traffic offenses. We have responded to what we could respond to issues around leakages, sewages. We have delivered babies, over one thousand five hundred every month, new Zimbabweans eh, to enjoy, eh, the independence and to fight for a greater and better Harare. The road is still there, but I do believe that we are laying the framework for, eh, a growth in Harare. We are laying a framework where we will be able to deliver services at a proud moment. We are going to give them stadia that will be world-class. We are going to, eh, eh, do the roads. Once we agree with Zinara, we are going to also look at the settlements that have sprouted, eh, through invasions. And we are going to provide services to them so that they can live in a modern environment and a modern city. And I believe that given another chance, we will be making Harare greater, we will protect it better and we will provide a service that the residents will be proud of. Now you can see teams are coming back to Harare. Cricket teams every week are coming back to Harare. Soccer teams will be coming back to Harare once Kestick Coventry and S I T Kikimulochwa get to their senses or they are moved altogether, so that young men and women can play soccer in peace. Harare will be the palace of dreams. We will make millionaires. Big churches are in Harare. Millionaires are in Harare. Big sportsmen are in Harare. Big journalists like you are in Harare. That is the city we are building and we are going to make it bigger, we are going to make it greater and even better for all citizens and Har- and Zimbabwe.
His worship, Mayor Jacob Mafume, will you want to be mayor in the next coming five years again?
Well, it's, it's, it's been a pleasure saving the people. Eh, a lot of sacrifices have been made. Eh, I was put in jail. It was very hard on my family. Eh, you know, that reminds me of my dear mother that I just lost recently. She used to say to me, ah, if they don't want you, don't they know that we want you as the head of our family? You can come and just make us happy and take care of us. But I believe that what my mother taught me, what my father taught me, is that, eh, people are a community. We live together. If the people will have me, if my party, eh, President Nelson Chamisa, who deployed me here, eh, feels that I need to be deployed here, I'm up to the task. If he feels that I have to be deployed elsewhere where I can be of use to both the party and the citizens, that will be it. But if the citizens, eh, wish and will that the journey that we have started and that we believe that there are things that need to be done, then we will continue to do it with them. Eh, we wish, eh, people a peaceful election. Eh, we wish a greater Zimbabwe. Eh, we want to celebrate our independence and we will protect the legacies that need to be protected going forward.
Do you think that the triple C has the way we thought and what it takes to be re-elected to run the city again?
Yes, we want to thank the people. They re-elected us during the by-elections. And we hope and pray that the people are with us. We have a beautiful project going on. The vision that has been spelled out by President Nelson Chamisa is very clear. It's self-evident and speaks to itself. And I do believe that, eh, the triple C combinations, the amount of talent, eh, eh, and the, the desire to assist people is there. It's a citizens-centered movement. We are pro-citizens and we want to return back the rights of the citizens.
But some, some have argued that here is dead, is a dodo.
You know, sometimes, eh, 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 when you are writing English words, eh, people become extravagant. We are the hope of the people. President Nelson Chamisa's vision is very much alive. We, the supporters are there. Eh, we won the by-elections just recently against all odds. And we do believe that the people have seen the message that we have put out. They've seen the effort that we have made to try and to defend them in the cities. And they know that once they place us at the right place, we will make every Zimbabwean alive. We are alive as a party. We are the most vibrant opposition movement, I dare say, in Africa. We have the most promise we have given, eh, eh, the ruling party a run for its money. They talk about us, even where they say we are dead. They talk about President Nelson Chamisa, even where they say he is not the one. They cannot spend a day, they cannot spend a morning. I dare say they cannot spend a minute without talking about the change champion in chief, without talking about triple C. How do you talk about the dead? Are we ancestors? Are we a spirit? No, you talk about us because we are alive. They say in English, eh, sometimes an exception, eh, becomes the rule. The more you talk about something, the more you justify its existence. We are ubiquitous. We are ever, ever present in their thoughts, in their consciousness and they will us to succeed. We are up to the challenge. We will make them succeed. They will be happier in a new Zimbabwe that we will run. They will be happier in a less corrupt Zimbabwe. They will be happier in a less violent Zimbabwe. We will make them happy.
Mayor, just, um, thank you very much for joining us, but just as you're parting short, I'll just ask you, mayor, to just, eh, look in the people of Zimbabwe and just probably give them a message that comes from your heart and from this dwelling of the townhouse.
What I want to say to the people of Zimbabwe, eh, this year, twenty twenty-three, is a pivotal year. It's a year that the Lord will work wonders, eh, in Zimbabwe. It's a year that we will ask you to have faith in the vision that President Nelson Chamisa is advocating. Have faith in us as some of his champions who are following, eh, what, eh, vision he has laid out. We do believe that it is time for Zimbabwe to come out of its shell, to be great. Zimbabwe to be one among of the best countries in the world. Harare to be the best city in the world. We are almost there. Let us all register to vote. Let us go and vote peacefully. Let us know that this is our country and that if we place the right people at the right places, we are going to go far. No one in Zimbabwe has anything to fear from us. Eh, no one has anything to fear from President Nelson Chamisa. We are the holders of the vision. The baton is being passed to us and we are creating it forward eh, as the Joshua movement of the liberation of Zimbabwe and the independence. And what we are going to do is to make sure that the ideals that people died for, their ideals and their aspirations will finally be fulfilled and Zimbabwe will enjoy and be prosperous under a new Zimbabwe governed by triple C led by President Nelson Chamisa.
Thank you very much, eh, his worship, the mayor, Jacob Mafume. Now here in the citadel of powerful Harare City Council here at Townhouse. This is, eh, probably the second largest economy in the country from central government. We have been ventilating and discussing the issues about issues that you should care about, what is happening in your city, what should happen and what is planned to happen. We are going to continue to keep checks and balances. Eh, you know, those who are elected in office must be transparent, must be accountable. And we, as the media, do this for you. Now, this is and this was the free talk with me, your worst Dara blessed and proud, proud, proud partnership with the Frederick Newman Foundation for Freedom. We were talking policy, we were talking direction and we were talking the future. Thank you very much, mayor.
Thank you.